Trainier.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Dollinger.
Here.
Ferry.
Here.
Frizzalone.
Here.
Markham.
Moustis.
Yeah.
Pinchura.
Harris.
Here.
You have a quorum, we also have Ms. Winfrey.
Can I ask Jackie to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2019?
Motion.
Second.
They're moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Old businesses, we don't have any old business, move on to new business. The first item is the appropriation of grant fund in the work service division budget. Been moved, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the final levy numbers. We need approval from the committee to accept them.
Second.
They're moved, probably second. Second, I mean, Rashawn, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to walk you guys through the final levy numbers. If you recall, in October, you estimated the levy. So if you want to look at the last page that says comparison of 2018 levy as estimated for 2019 budget, we'll look at the final levy column. You'll see for each category, the final levy numbers have come in. The corporate is final number 78,750,216. I won't go through all of those. So we estimated 125,383,789. We actually received 125,471,110,000, million. So our previous extension was 121,380,720. The CPI was 2.1 percent, which gave us an adjusted extension base of 123,929,715. You can see the gross estimated assessed value was 23 billion, 154,000,168,940. The exemption and abatements is there, which gives us our net EAV. We take the net EAV, less the new property, and you can, you'll note here that our new property from our estimate went up, the final numbers that came in, so that decreased our adjusted valuation base, which our limiting rate was .5898, which was estimated, so our final rate is .5927. And our extension limit, the amount is the 125,471,110. So the final limiting rate is still lower than our previous year. So we did pretty, pretty well. Yes.
What was last year's again?
Last year's rate?
Was that the .5898?
No, that's what we, that's what we estimated. Last year's rate.
That's what I thought. We don't have last year's on here, do we?
We don't have it on here.
On this?
And I can get that for you.
I just knew it went down.
Yes.
And it went, did it go down by more than what we expected, or the same?
What do you mean?
I think the rate came in when we, it came a little higher.
It came in a little bit higher, actually. Yeah, where we anticipated.
The .59 instead of the .58.
Correct.
Alright.
And that was because new prop, we've got more new property.
Right, the extra new property.
Yes. Any other questions on that?
This is probably the most difficult thing to understand of what we do here on the county board.
Camera right down.
Well, for some of us. Okay.
Okay, we do have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is the monthly corporate fund budget to actual report.
So everyone should have the budget to actual report. This is our year-end results, as of November 30th, 2018. This is how we ended physical year for 2018. I'm going to kind of walk through this. On the first page, we have our pie charts, we have revenue with accruals, we have our expenses with accruals by category, and you can note the percentages, the breakdown there. On the second page, we have our corporate cash balance. And you'll note for 2018, we ended the physical year at 49.6 million, which is about 592,000 down from 17, but a little in line with where we were for 16. On the third page, it's a summary of revenue and expense, broken out by our budget, actual and comparison. You'll note on page three, our adopted budget for both revenue and expense, the middle column in which we'll focus our actual numbers, and then the comparison as to how we did compared to 2017. So overall, revenue, we, revenue was favorable, we exceeded the budgeted projections by 3.6 million. This is due to higher than anticipated intergovernmental by 6 million, which is, which was driven by some of the tax revenue. Our projections were a little bit, our actual was a little bit higher than our projections. And then also the Sunny Hill Nursing Home reimbursements, some of the revenue that they had anticipated actually, or had been working to get, actually came in, I think right before the end of the physical year, so that was a plus. Yes, round of applause for them, and I'm sure if they were, were here, they would have a great report, that they had been working diligently to get those funds from the state and to be paid at the correct rate as well. On the expense side, wanted to point out that our actual expenditures were 2.6 million lower than budgeted figures, which is lower than the prior year. So on the revenue side, overall, we brought in about 102 percent, which is great, and on the expense side, we only expended about 98 percent of our budget overall. Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, Rashawn, on the expenses, our fringes were way down from our budgeted amount.
4.7 million. What was that contributed to?
Part of that was contributed to the IMRF, the percentage, and if you recall, 19, it decreased, for the 19 budget, it decreased significantly, 18 as well, and then also the health insurance, that was the first year that the employees start to contribute a little bit more towards their healthcare, health insurance premium.
Jim?
If I may pursue some of that, I'm specifically interested, of course, in health insurance, in where we're at, because, you know, I think that's the biggest, well, to me, it's, it's the largest budget concern, because it's, that's an area that the expense can outstrip the revenue growth pretty easily and quickly. So, you know, that's why contributions are, of course, hopefully going to help offset that a little bit, even though I don't think they're at where they're going to need to be at some point in time.
Right.
But on the actual expense side, I guess I'm, you know, and this is a little bit more of a medium insurance question, you know, it'd be nice to know if some of the initiatives the county's taken is making an impact on the cost, such as the wellness type initiatives and so forth.
Right, and I think the two, the two things, Jim, that are in our favor are the employees contributing a little bit more, if you recall, with the contractual agreement, with the labor agreement, we have that increase in each year in incremental steps, so that I think over the five years, we wanted to get them at a certain percentage, so each year it's increasing, you know, a percent. And then the other thing is our renewal with Aon, the analysis that they're doing and looking at our claim experience was pretty favorable for 2018.
Along the same lines, you know, in the IMRF a little bit, I think, and that is that I believe our employee demographic is changing in the fact that they're younger, older people are retiring, and of course, even though that has an impact on IMRF initially, because we have to basically fund their pension when they retire, it does have a positive effect on the overall rate that we pay IMRF eventually, you know. So I was wondering if some of that is coming into play, and if you do that analysis, you know, with a younger employee base, what kind of impact that's, it may be having, not only with benefits, but also the overall wage, because everybody comes in on a pay grade, you know, you start out here, and you wind up here, it'd also be interesting to see going forward where we're at in the, in the overall pay grade chart, you know, do we have more people that are in the middle, in the beginning, which affects salaries? And I think that's a good budgeting tool, especially for us on our end. I mean, elected officials tend not to want to change what their salary, what their salary budgets are, but if they, but if they have, I think the sheriff's office is probably the best, easiest example. You know, if you have, if you had 70 percent at the top, and now you have, you know, 50 percent at the beginning of the pay grades, you know, there's a, there's a big difference.
Right.
So I mean, I'm wondering if that is having some impact. I'm just, going forward, I'm just throwing out some things that we...
Yeah, that's, that's something that we can...
But I think it's an analysis that's worth going through for your own self, you know, to see where people stand within their, where people are in these pay grades. You know, we say, well, we do these buyouts, and the reason I bring it up, we do buyouts. You know, Mike may always make these big cases for, yeah, well, we're going to replace an $80,000 deputy with a $45,000 deputy, but the budgets don't change.
Right.
If the, you know, if the budgets aren't changing, you know, what good did us to do the buyout? The whole thing was to bring down the overall, maybe, cost, that there were some savings in these buyouts, which I'm not so sure we ever see a dime in those, but these are just questions I have going forward.
Okay.
Letitia, so we can, Rashawn, I'm sorry, Rashawn, so, so maybe we can be more prepared going forward when we do the budgets, and that the committee is more informed.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Alright, okay, so continuing on to page four. This is just a revenue in detail. I just wanted to point out, for most of the categories, you'll note that we've brought in, we met or exceeded our projections for the year. And then on page six, this is a summary of expenses for each, each department, the percent of annual budget expended to date, we had a few departments that were over the 100 percent. And then on the last page, on page seven, is, is a breakdown of salaries and all other commodities in detail. And you'll note, we had about six departments who were over in salary and fringes, and that was mostly for county board, the sick pay, we pay that out every year for that, some of the other departments. It was the contractual labor agreements that put them over, and then we had a couple of departments in all other commodities where they expended a little bit, and then county clerk elections, they had, for all other commodities, they had a category, I think for their election software, where they went over a little bit. But overall, we were under the 100 percent for salaries, we came in at 99 percent, and then for all other expenses, we were at 95 percent, which was under the 100 percent. So overall, I think, and I mentioned this in bringing forth the budget cleanup, overall, I thought we did fairly well in closing out the fiscal year for 2018.
Jackie.
Just a question about overtime in the sheriff's department, and how much did we have this year?
Ooh.
Just ballpark, I'm not...
I think they were at probably in the 3 million range, and I don't know if we have anyone here from the sheriff's office, but if you look, and I think I can say this confidently, I think this is the first year where the sheriff's office really didn't expend too much over their budgeted.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because didn't we budget them about that much?
Yes.
I was pretty sure, so we did really well. Let's keep crime down in Will County and keep the overtime down.
Other question?
Jim?
You know, I still have concern about elected officials overspending their personnel budgets, and the fact that we don't find out about it until this meeting, so to speak. We find out about it after the fact, and as the state's attorney's office has told me many times, you, you have to pay the employees. But we, but we should also be informed, in my view, when they run out of money in their, in their personnel budgets. Gives us the opportunity to maybe move some money, it maybe gives us the opportunity to talk to the elected official on how are they going to handle this, you know, maybe they're going to have to lay somebody off, or whatever, you know, temporarily. I mean, you know, there's a, it's always easy to pick on the sheriff's office, because they, because they got a big budget, and they continually go over, even if it's better, they still go over what's budgeted on their personnel.
Right.
You know, and I could say, you know, the first thing you hear is things like, well, you want us to pull policemen off the street? Well, no, but maybe 40 percent of your personnel budget is support or clerical. I mean, you know, I'm not necessarily looking to go into your, your sworn personnel, but I do want to see the overall operation. Gives us the opportunity to have that discussion. I think I asked this last year, I just don't know why we're not informed long ahead of time. And by the way, I'm picking on the sheriff's office, all because it's an easy one, I mean, to pick on. I mean, he's not the only one. I mean, I'm just, is this an easy example to use, primarily because of the size. You may have an issue, for example, in the coroner's office, totally different circumstances, small office, all of a sudden, he has some catastrophic event, and he's going to be over his budget pretty easily.
Right.
You know, we understand that, so, so, but nevertheless, I think that we, I just wish we could become more aware of...
Well, I think we, 2018, we began to, we started a process, and you will see more of the budget to actual results coming forth, and I know, you know, last year, we did it a couple of times, but that's one tool to keep the board informed. The other thing is that the finance department, Karen and myself, we're also monitoring the budgets for departments throughout the year, especially salaries, and we're, we're being proactive to have them clean it up throughout the year, and monitor, you know, their salary lines, where they're not going over, where they don't have a huge...
And I think that's true...
Where they're not over budget, where we're getting to the year end, and I think that's one of the other factors why we saw a much cleaner...
Well, that was going to be my next comment. I know that you are monitoring it pretty closely, you and Karen, and I think it has had a positive effect on, in keeping people more in line with their budget, so I do recognize that.
Okay.
So, and I think you, you've made a difference, for sure, I know you have.
And we do have some departments who are watching that closely, because no one wants to go over budget, but I think we had, we also have some things that came into play, you know, with some of the contractual agreements, the retro pay.
Correct.
But going forward, we wanted to have, we want to have a tighter budget, where we're budgeting for things that we know about, where we get to actually true budgeting, from my perspective.
Yeah. Great. Mike, Herb?
Oh, Mike? Who's that? Okay. Sorry. When you're talking about the sheriff, we're getting close to being dead on. We, we did the overtime, we were only 448,000 in the negative on an $80,000 budget.
Right.
So we're dead close, we just added four more COs, which hopefully will put another dent in that overtime, and then hopefully next year, we'll be dead on.
Right.
Herb?
And mine is more of a comment, Jim, you alluded to this, but last year, before Bob Contros retired, he came before our committee and kind of talked about some of the reasoning, which I know you know, Jim and Mike, for the overtime, disasters that would be beyond their control and things like that. But also the state's attorney office, Jim Glasswell did mention that some of his overtime went into some high-profile murder cases that took place here in Will County, and I remember him making a comment on that, was kind of like some things that beyond their control as well. However, in that comment, I think they, the finance committee did a very good job along the way, as you said, Rashawn, monitored that, checked into that, make sure it didn't get too big out of hand. But I remember Bob and Jim did come to the committee and talk about those things, and I do believe we are getting a whole lot better.
Mike?
Yeah, the state's attorney actually came in...
200,000 under budget. So he was, he was right on, and like you said, Bob Contro had told us the different issues, but we still know we have a big chunk we can attack, and hopefully those next four COs should show dividends this year, so that we can be dead on next year.
He didn't have to repeat it someplace.
That's right.
Now, if I understand correctly, the new county system is pretty much coming online, that's going to give us the ability to ask questions and get data in a more expeditious manner to address some issues, like Jim said, what we can do monitoring. I mean, it, right now, when I spoke with Mike Shea, it's just a matter of how much inquiry capability we want as board members. So I think Speaker Winfrey, and I guess the department here is going to be making that decision, but it's, it sounds nice, it's a real nice system, and I look forward to that getting implemented, so.
There's no other question, that completes my report.
Can I just make a suggestion on the report? If you can add the letter and numbers on the columns, I think it'd be much easier to follow along, for like the spreadsheet, if that's not too much trouble.
I'm sorry, and?
Like the column label, or column letter, like column A, I think it'd be easier to read and follow along, at least for me. Okay, where we at?
Yeah, we're not looking at it on a big monitor.
Assignment tax certificates.
We're looking at it on itty-bitty iPad.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, we do. That stops your committee.
For Rashawn?
Nope. Rashawn's gone, so we can move on. That's just an update.
You go, Jim.
Okay, the next item is the assignment of the tax sales certificate.
Move.
Move, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carry. Number five is the authorization of a county executive to execute the necessary documents for the delinquent tax program.
Move.
Move, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Other new business, there's no other new business. Public comments, any comments from the public? Any comment from the public? Gone once, gone twice, gone. Chairman reports, I don't have any reports, I don't think we have a need for an executive session. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next meeting is May 7th, 2019. Appreciate you guys for coming. And the next, up next is the Capitol joint, joint meeting, Capitol Finance. What time is we starting?
So I have Trainier, Dollinger, Ferry, Frizzalone.
We also thought we were going to be done selling the business, and I would have to be at the office training the new owner. It didn't go through, there were two snafus, one Friday, one today, so it's going to go through next Monday.
Selling the business?
Mm-hmm. I'm cleaning business.
Oh, oh, you're selling?
Mm-hmm. We have a buyer.
Who?
It is cool, actually. Okay. Who's calling this?
So, it's, it's on the Capitol, or what, the meeting?
It should be, well, it's under finance and it's under Capitol.
Oh, I did see it on the finance. There it is.
Yep. And then, let me go see if I can...
Sheer, I guess, or take the lead?
Give me a minute, I'm going to go see if I can round up.
Rachel, or?
Well, I know Tyler's, Amanda's here, I've seen her, make sure that Fritz and Marianne, he's not part of that other meeting, so.
If I thought it was only going to be one piece of paper, I really would have stayed home. I thought there was going to be a lot more of them.
No one pages, I would turn it...
Well, that's, that's just presentation paper.
Turning in the brass.
Oh, my God.
Have you ever driven this country?
We live in San Diego, South of it.
Every year, man.
Every year.
Same day we're here.
Same day, that's good.
Is it a vase?
It's a collection, Ray taking a collection?
Is it a vase, you put flowers in it?
That's his GoFundMe page.
Well, no, I was just going to put it on my desk.
How did you, uh?
It's, it's a machine that I've been putting together for six months, that you can actually sublimate an image into the actual glass itself.
Wow. Alright, how much do you sell in these stores?
I don't know.
I need more junk, like I need a phone in my head, but it's really cool.
It's a collection, it's that GoFundMe.
Yeah, GoFundMe, this is for my next election, I should burn it. So, yeah, so the process...
Yeah, this is nice.
Is actually sublimated in it, or some people like to just do stickers and things like that.
Hey, Deb.
Cool, Ray, you're an entrepreneur.
Camera's over here, Joe, they want me...
They want the back there.
Yeah, your best side.
This is the same people that have the house in the garage. You got one in the courthouse, one now for a department.
Okay. Apartment, okay. Does it say which, oh, there it is, WC, East D.
What's the format, Herb?
What's that?
Just go through the agenda and open it up for discussion.
That's it. That's what this means. The thing is...
Do I call them up, or they stay, know the...
I think that Dave will have, mostly have the floor, so he'll tell you what's going on next.
Okay.
Don't forget though, we have that...
What I wanted to take some time during this joint meeting to review with both committees is the budgeted amount versus the dollars spent to date on both the Will County Courthouse project and the Will County Health Department project. And each one of you, if you don't have a summary sheet for both projects, then I have additional copies here in case anyone needs them. So, if you'd like to begin with the, do you have a preference for which project we begin with?
No, I don't have a preference. Just wanna make sure everybody got the right handouts in front of them.
We also have representatives from both our construction managers and our architects on each project. So, the entire project team, including representatives from the Will County Executive's Office, are here to, you know, answer any questions or so forth. But at this time, what I'd like to do is, with your permission, is hand the floor over to our project director for the Will County Courthouse and ask you to join me in reviewing the summary sheet for the dollars spent through March 2019 on the courthouse project.
And that's Gilbane, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Got the floor?
They'll turn it on for you.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. I'm David Losnack from Gilbane. I'm the project director for the project that, for the courthouse team. I'm here to kinda review the project overall budget and where we stand to date. These are costs that have been submitted through March 31, 2019. Right now, our overall construction value budget that we have issued in terms of contracts, this also includes Gilbane's cost to manage the project, our general conditions and so forth, is 181,380,690 to date. We have billed 82,205,864, which is about 45% complete with the project. The next line item down is that when we originally set the budget at 215 million, the, what's listed as the owner's contingency, this is the amount of money that was remaining of 9,574,033 that was part of the $215 million budget. It was what we called additional savings. To date, we billed 126,405, and that is primarily for the electrical system, for the PV panels or the solar array panels up on the roofs. So, that, the amount spent is 1.32%. The owner's soft costs, which is, includes the architect and their consultants and so forth, of 17,033,148. To date, they have billed 11,517,128 for a total completion of 67%. And then the remaining budget, which is what the project is carrying for FF and E and moving costs, of 7 million, 12,129. To date, we have not bid any of that work, so we don't have any cost for that as of yet. That is to be forthcoming. So, all of those numbers in the budget column add up to 215 million, which is what the board has approved for the budget for the Will County project. To date, we've spent 93,849,397, which in total of the overall project cost is 43% to date. Any questions that you may have?
Yep.
Go ahead, Jim.
Gloria?
Gloria, go ahead.
Dave, can you give me? Yes, what these owner's soft costs are?
It's basically the architectural fees. It's, their consultants, which would be Farnsworth's. But they're part of the soft costs.
Oh, yes. It's all soft costs. And you're not frickin' worse.
Okay, that's what I just wanted.
So, those are a majority of it. There are other items in it. If the board really wants to know, I can give you a breakdown of what all of those soft costs total for the 17 million.
I guess I got another question then. All the furnishings and everything that are gonna go into the courthouse, do they come out of the soft costs then, or is that out of the?
No, that's a...
Or totally, totally that comes out of that? Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Clarifying that, just so you know what that means, is that that's the FF and E, majority of it is furniture?
There is a certain amount of money that we have bought with the project in terms of some of the IT and that. There are areas that we do have costs already in the project for that, that we bought. But a majority of this is your furniture. There will be some computers that you'll be buying that will come out of this cost for the new courthouse facility.
Yes. Jim, Dan Ray? I'm sorry. Jim, Dan Ray?
So, I wanna get back to the, maybe I just wanna restate the contingency or have a better understanding. Our original budget was 215. That's what we budgeted. When we, after the majority of the bids that went out and the responses that came back, there was savings from estimates. Let's say a $5 million.
No, it was, it's the 9,570.
It was the whole 9 million.
Yes.
So, prior to that, so the whole 9 million didn't come out of the budget, the 9 million in savings, we just put it over into a contingency.
That's correct.
Okay, so, the contingency, you know, may or may not be spent when it's all said and done. We don't know, but...
That's correct. It's not likely to be all spent.
Yeah, so...
Unless you add 9 million.
Unless we add to the project, which I, which, well, which, you know, yeah, Jason's trying to get us to expand it, but you know. We may add a parking lot or something. I mean, which is things that we perhaps cut out of the project originally, so. Okay, so, the whole contingency was the savings from the...
From the buyout.
Okay, thank you.
Ray? So, my question?
I just, I just wanna clarify though, too, just for everybody's benefit, that this owner's contingency does not include the construction contingency that is being carried within the 181,000, 181 million amount. That's a construction contingency of about, it was right, 4.6 roughly?
It started, actually, if I can correct, it started at 4.5. Through some value engineering, it went up to as high as 4.6. To date, my construction contingency that I have remaining is 3.1.
What happens if you don't spend?
It goes back to the county.
So, like, for example?
Any money that we do not spend on this project outside of our general conditions goes back to the county.
Yep.
So, to get back to my original question?
This mic's not on.
When I see budget on here, I'm thinking that's the budget, the construction budget, the 215, I see it in there. You're saying that the original construction value was what going into the project? What was it? Was it 181 million?
Well, we had put, the original, when we were budgeting the job, it was 215 million.
Right.
When we bid it out, it came in at 181 million.
Right. But what was that number originally? 191?
What's that?
What was that number originally? 191?
It would've been...
19.5.
It would've been 190.5.
So, that, so that entire thing right there includes the 4.5 million budget. So, if we were to look at a snapshot as of sitting right now today, we would be about 14 million under on this project if the project were complete today without an additional dollar spent, correct?
If I carried my contingency and didn't spend another dime of it, I would be adding 3.1 million to the 9.5 million.
So, Ray, we had 12 million, 14 million, I guess it was 12.
13 million. 14 million.
14 million.
That's what my estimate was, 14 million?
No.
No, I understand it, but originally, we were at 14 million after the savings that came in. So, when everything was bid, we had 9.5 there, and then we had another 4.5 in construction contingency. So, we're at 14... If we bid it out, we were carrying...
Four and a half million in contingency of construction, plus the 9.5, is the 14 million that you're referencing.
Yep.
And that was at the time that we awarded everything.
Right. And as of today, we have 3.1 left in construction contingency?
Yes.
Not including what you're proposing to spend in the next meeting? Correct? Or does that include that?
That includes that.
So, the 3.1 is with the assumption that we approve everything in the next meeting?
That is correct.
Okay. That's where I wanted to know. Thank you.
Right, I understand it, but I wanted to know if his 3.1 included all those that
we're gonna vote on in like 20 minutes, or if that's before all those get voted in? It's included? Okay.
Yeah, the only other comment I would make is I do think it was a good idea to put that on the owner's contingency, just in case, you know. I know there's certain people didn't, I know Don, for example, didn't have faith in some of those bids and thinks it might come back and bite us a little bit. I'm hoping he's not correct. So, anyway, so I do think it was the proper way of doing it. But I was confused there for a bit.
Yes, we all were.
And we were all confused there for a bit. I think I'm not, no longer confused, so.
Do I guess, just to clarify then? That 81, 181 budget, 4.5, that includes that 4.5 in that number for the construction contingency? Yep? Okay.
Don, you got a question? Okay, no. Jim?
So, like the FF and E, at what point will you start going out and soliciting bids for those, that type of activity?
It's our plan to put that out for bid at the end of the, well, in fall.
You're gonna wait till fall?
This is fall, fall of 2019.
Okay, you think that'll be enough lead time, you think you're just gonna need common kind of stuff, you don't see a problem?
I sought expert advice on that, and I was told that was a very good time to put that out on this.
Real expert or self-proclaimed expert?
A real expert. No other discussion on the Will County courthouse? We can move forward to the Will County Health Department. Anybody need a summary sheet for Will County Health Department project? Joel, this is courthouse?
See the color code, the color paper?
Joel, if I could help? Joel, why don't we leave off the discussion from here? Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask our very own Joe Van Essen to lead the discussion off. He is the hands-on project manager for the Will County Executive's Office. I'd like to have him lead this discussion, if it's okay with you.
That's fine with me.
It's okay with me, I don't know about him. It's okay with me.
Oh, sorry.
Karen, I want to make some more copies of the summary sheet, so...
Yeah, they're coming right now. You want me to just pause for a second? So, we've talked about the Health Department in a previous meeting, but this allows a same format, so you can, you know, compare apples to apples with the courthouse. Nicole's gonna kinda run through the sheet just like Dave did, but we are into the construction period of the project here now, and you can see some of the costs in front of you. So, Nicole, would you like to go ahead and run through?
Sure, I would love to go ahead. So, my name is Nicole McElroy. I am the senior project manager for Leopardo Construction, for the record. So, all right, so this sheet is the exact same as the courthouse, so it's easy to follow along. I'm gonna start in the column of the budget column. So, to date, the overall construction contract is 25,412,219. That was approved in the February Capital Committee. In November, Leopardo submitted a control estimate budget, which was 27,89,868. So, there was a savings of 1,677,649. That was for the bidding trade savings. That all went back to the county and while the control estimate and the final contract went from 27 million to 25 million, which in return made the overall project budget, which is the bottom number, come in at 32 million.
Nicole?
Yes.
Before you go another further, the word control budget, for those of us that's not in construction, does that mean it was out of control? Or what is control specifically?
So, because this is not a guaranteed maximum price, I wasn't submitting anything that said, I guarantee this, I guarantee that. But what Leopardo did was say, this is the budget, so this is what we're basing all of our numbers off of when we actually go out to bid. So, we called that a control estimate budget that allowed us to make sure we were coming in where we thought we were coming in. So, that was done before we started to bid, so we didn't go further. And really, we bid a little bit, but we really wanted to say, okay, do we all approve this 27 million? Do we agree with that? Yes. Then we actually bid the project out, and we saw savings similar to Gilbane. Obviously, not as much, but it's a percentage. And so, we, in turn, in that February, said, okay, we are now hard bid the entire project out. This is your value of the project at the 25 million. So, once we agreed to that in the February... 677,649. That was for the bidding trade savings. That all went back to the county, and while the control estimate and the final contract went from 27 million to 25 million, which in return made the overall project budget, which is the bottom number, come in at 32 million.
Nicole?
Yes.
Before you go another further, the word control budget, for those of us that's not in construction, does that mean it was out of control? Or what is control specifically?
So, because this is not a guaranteed maximum price, I wasn't submitting anything that said, I guarantee this, I guarantee that. But what Leopardo did was say, this is the budget, so this is what we're basing all of our numbers off of when we actually go out to bid. So we called that a control estimate budget that allowed us to make sure we were coming in where we thought we were coming in. So that was done before we started to bid, so we didn't go further. And really, we bid a little bit, but we really wanted to say, okay, do we all approve this 27 million? Do we agree with that? Yes. Then we actually bid the project out, and we saw savings similar to Gilbane. Obviously, not as much, but it's a percentage. And so we, in turn, in that February, said, okay, we are now hard bid the entire project out. This is your value of the project at the 25 million. So once we agreed to that in the February, that is what the actual, I did a change order, if you will, and gave back that savings. So you don't see it on that sheet, because the savings is that full project value of 32 million.
I don't see it so much as a savings, by the way.
Sure.
What it really is, in my view, you give an estimated budget, and then there becomes an actual, because now we have actual numbers. So compared to the estimated budget of 27, and the actual budget, which were the actual bids that came in, is the difference.
Sure. And that's why you'll hear savings, because in the construction world, that is the vernacular that we use, is trade savings.
I understand. You could have made it a 30 million dollar and told us you saved us 5 million.
We could do a lot of things, so.
I'm just saying, one is an estimate, and one is an actual.
Sure.
That's all.
Sure.
You know, I just thought you, by the terminology, by the way.
No worries. No worries.
And just as a point of clarification, we're talking about the November 2018 versus February 5, and we're talking about the bidding process. There were three bid packages for this project, okay? So between November of 2018 and February of 2019, the result, the bid opening for bid package number three occurred. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, it was partially bid, and those numbers that were established and ratified in November was about two-thirds of the job, if you want to look at it that way. And then the final bid package came, and then the results and the adjustments that were made that Nicole spoke of were done after those results were in, so.
Nicole, how much of the overall construction value after our savings, when it went down to 25 million dollars, is construction contingency?
What makes up the 25 million?
Yeah, how much is construction contingency?
Oh, the percentage?
The dollar amount.
Okay. In the current 25 million construction value that you see at the top, Leopardo has a construction contingency of 5 million, I'm sorry, 5 percent, 5 percent, which is 1.1 million dollars. I can get the exact value, but it's 5 percent of the total contract.
Okay. So the owner contingency out here is different. It's not like we did on the courthouse where we just took the savings and slid it down.
Yeah, that is not savings. That is a 2.5 percent contingency.
Yes.
For the owner outside of the Leopardo Construction contingency.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to keep going.
Okay.
So, the construction value of 25 million billed to date has been 3 million, 338 and 5 dollars, which is 13 percent of the total project. We broke ground the first week in December. Then, from there, as Ray had said, everything else is what we call below the line, which means it's outside of Leopardo's contract. And that consists of an owner contingency of 635, 305. Zero has been spent to date. An owner soft cost, which was a budgeted of 4 million, 28,666. And then billed to date has been 2 million, 285,702, which is 57 percent. And then they as well have an FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and a moving cost of 2 million, 9914. And 0 percent has been spent on that yet to date. So the total project budget, which is the hard cost and the soft cost, hard cost being the Leopardo Construction contingency, and the soft cost being these other three buckets, owner contingency, owner soft cost, FFNE, and moving cost, is 32 million, 85,504. Billed to date, 5 million, 623,707. Total project completed to date, 17.53 percent.
What was the estimated budget?
So, the, right now, the substantial completion for the total complex is December 2, 2020. The building is scheduled to be completed before that, so the Health Department has time to move in of June 17, 2020.
So, if I may add, so then at that time after? The move, then the final phase of the project is to abate the existing building, demolish the existing building, and then construct surface parking in its place. And that'll be the final phase, and that'll be completed at the end of that calendar year.
Jackie, then Ray?
My question has to do with the old building. It's really old, and there's probably lead paint, loads of it, and asbestos. Is that included in the cost projection?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not on Capitol, so I haven't been at most of the meetings, so.
Is there a little remediation in that building?
No, I'm sure there's been some.
The cost associated with the reports, and then actually to remediate, is part of the owner soft cost, so that has been included in those values.
Thank you.
And then the total schedule, though, has been included in the overall schedule. But those costs are in the soft cost you see up there.
Thank you.
What is the design contingency for Cluver on the Health Department?
Got it. So in the overall construction value, there is a 1 percent design contingency in that budget number of 25 million, 412 to 19. So just as Gilbane had said, if that is not spent, that goes directly back to the county. Same with the Leopardo Construction contingency. Whatever I do not spend on that goes directly back to the county.
So just to make sure we're fully clear, the 1 percent design contingency is not part of the 5 percent construction contingency?
Correct. Construction contingency is purely, as it says, construction use only. Design is design use only. And then the owner contingency that you see at 635, like Gilbane said, normally in the jargon, Jim, close your ears, in the construction jargon world, that would be owner and design. But we have a design of 1 percent contingency included in that 25 million.
So the combination of the three contingency funds, you get about $2 million in there as of right now?
In addition, because I believe that's what started some of this confusion, if you will, in that, because again, for everyone who doesn't understand hard, soft cost, when we say hard cost, that is purely a construction value. So in that value, there is a 1 percent design contingency, a 5 percent construction, and then a 2 percent owner contingency. And the reason for that is there's going to be things inside the construction budget that might need to be changed and whatnot. The owner contingency that you see up at 635 is for a soft cost if there's things outside the construction budget that needs to happen for whatever reason.
So we have about 2.5 million dollars in total?
I don't know the value, but I know the total percentage is 10.5 percent.
Okay. About 2.5.
Okay.
Mike, you have a question?
No. I thought we were at the 10.5, that was Joel's original memo.
Memo show.
We just do that so that there is, on the construction side, the hard cost, there may be some changes here and there. The owner's contingency there, like Nicole said, it's really just for the owner's soft costs or the FFNE. You know, we haven't got those final numbers in. It might need to be a little adjusted here or there. Hopefully, we come below it, and then we don't have to use any of it, so.
Any other questions on the Health Department? Okay, good. No, we can discuss it. I guess part of the discussion, we have talked about the courthouse demolition, this is for the committee, and also the parking lot. I don't know if we want to have a discussion here or have it separate in Capitol. But I know we had a lot of discussion about the demolition, but there's nothing really concrete that we decided which direction we're going to go with that. So I'd just like to open that up for discussion, if anybody, Jim?
I thought the Capitol Committee did a quick order resolution, or at least at committee level, said that the old courthouse would be demolished.
So I think, I think so.
We didn't vote on it at full.
I'm not so sure we didn't. I think we may have. I'm not sure, but certainly at committee level, we, you know, we talked about it, we got the estimates, we talked about the pros and cons. You know, I came to the conclusion that the building, we actually caught, the old courthouse would cost more to do rehab than it would cost to do new construction. So I think that prior board did make a decision to move forward with demolishing the building. So that's my recollection.
Ray? It was discussed extensively at Capitol Committee. At Capitol Committee, we put a vote up. It voted, I believe it was unanimous, to demolish the courthouse. However, we did not put it in resolution form, because at the time, the Capitol Committee was the owner's agent for the courthouse. So many believe that the decision was going to be made in there and not be brought to the full board. So, but if you're asking if there was a formal resolution, no. But was there a formal vote? Yes.
And as the owner agent, you know, I don't think, and I'm going to look at Mary, I don't think the committee would have had that authority, even as owner agent, to make the decision to demolish the building. I'm just wondering, Mary, is that something that would have had to go to the full county board? Because I'm going to make a motion that it does.
Yes, we have to go to county board. Your owner agent. The party is for the construction of the new courthouse, not what to do with the old courthouse.
So let me say, you know, I don't mind necessarily rehashing this whole thing over again. I mean, I think that, that's why I was saying, for the sake of new board members. But the building is, the building is not adaptable to current uses, or uses that could potentially go in there, whether it be, you know, the county clerk going over there out of this building, or whether, you know, other offices went in there. We came to the conclusion, based on advice from consultants, that it was just not a good building for that. And then we looked at the actual numbers to rehab it. It would have cost us more to rehab it than it costs per square foot than it costs to do new buildings, plus the operational cost of that building is fairly high. So I don't think any of that's changed. You know, I would recommend, and I'd make the motion that we at least move forward to, move this forward to the executive committee with the old, with the recommendation that was put forward by the prior Capitol Improvements Committee, because that certainly was the intent, and at least we can discuss it then at executive committee. So, you know, Denise, I'd like to move that to executive committee. I don't think anything's changed. It's more being informational to two members. So can I make a motion to move that subject to the executive committee?
It was not the executive, so I don't know.
Well, we're not taking, we're not taking, we're not taking final, we're not taking final action, Mary. I'm just asking to move that subject to executive. I can do that.
It's okay. Yes, that's okay. I'll second.
Okay, motion second. I do would like to have the discussion again, so.
I have a question, though, Jim. You guys had the discussion before, and I don't want to get into a big discussion here and now, because it's going to go to executive. Did you guys talk about, like, selling that building at all? Was that ever a part of the conversation?
First of all, and I'm going to look at Mary a little bit. First, it's pretty difficult to sell property, but, county-owned property. But that site has a real value. I happen to think that site is the most valuable site of all downtown Joliet. Certainly, it needs to be redeveloped. You know, and I can tell you my vision, you know, my vision would be that, you know, it would be a county-city complex with private sector components to it. I think it could be extremely valuable. Putting that to the side, the decision on demolishing the courthouse was purely on the facts. It was more like dollars and cents. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't an emotional, it said, well, it just doesn't make sense.
It's not an emotional building.
No. I mean, it doesn't make sense to keep it. It doesn't make any sense to rehab it. And we don't have any offices or real uses that can be, it's not adaptable to other uses that we might have. So it was pretty much based on, okay. But I will say this, you know, when I look at, you know, I hope I can save that whole 9 million. I hope I can save another million out of the thing. We have another 10 million, you know. I would love to move forward and develop that. Because I happen to think, like I say, it could be the most important component. I think, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying discussions. I think, you know, the city of Joliet has talked about maybe they'd be interested in redoing their facility and moving their city operation in a common building, you know. So I think there's a lot of potential, and we should not give up that site, in my opinion.
Okay. I was just wanting to know if it was discussed about selling it.
Yeah.
We sell old trucks.
I know.
And I agree 100 percent with former Capitol Improvement Chairperson, can't remember your name, but that man, right? Jason, you remember last year, you did make a presentation before Ray's committee, and we talked about that, and everything you talked about, Jim, as difficult it is for me to say this, you were right. No, not too bad. Not that difficult. But you're right, you're right.
Do we need to tell a joke now?
I'm thinking of one. But now, we're taking it back to executive for additional discussion. And as you said, Jim, we did have this discussion already. And it was more feasible to demolish that building when you brought the facts, Jason, about repurposing or whatever. And so now are you asking to take discussion back to the executive all over again?
What I'm asking you is, I'm looking for a path to get it to the full county board for a vote, so we can vote. So everybody has.
I believe is through the executive committee, and that gives new members ample time to ask questions, understand the issue. So that's why I'm doing it. I'm looking for a path to, to get it to the county board.
All right.
For the county board.
So just for clarification, then, would we be asking Jason to do another presentation at executive? Or we would, because I think that's an important date, or whenever it's going to be on the calendar to get it scheduled? Or are you just going to take the information based on the conversations that we had in the past? Because Jason's numbers were really great, as far as all the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a very good question. And I'm thinking that what we might do, and I like the idea of moving it to executive, that's not a problem. Because we do have quite a few newer members, maybe we do a scaled-down presentation, but a handout beforehand so that people understand, have a chance to read through it, so that we can scale that discussion down. We don't want to go into a full-blown recap of that, but want to give people enough information so that they understand what we're talking about. If we can do that, Jason?
Sure, sure. And I could give you.
And that way, people can have an understanding of what's going on.
There's probably, there's probably, I'll just give you a real brief overview here right now. There's probably three primary issues that come into play with that building. One, it requires a pretty significant investment to, you know, sort of bring that building up to modern standards, energy efficiency, maintenance, you know, all of those things. It's an old building. Not that it has, you know, it's had maintenance and so forth, but it needs a lot of expense, I think, to bring it up to standards and renovate and so forth. The other kind of big factor with that building is it's not, you know, I think I've used the term with this group before, purpose-built buildings. That building is not really well set up to be used for the types of uses you might need to use it for in the future. And it's a, because of the nature of its construction, the heavy concrete construction, it's very difficult to renovate it. So two kind of challenges there. The other big factor that came into play is, is you look at other uses you might have for that building. There's a couple that. There's a couple that tie to the judiciary. There's a public defender who's in a leased space right now, probation, who's in the Emco Building. But over time, the plan is to allow them to move out so state's attorney can expand as needed over time. And then there's a couple ancillary things like problem-solving courts offices and that. If you look at those functions, there's really not enough square footage need just in those functions to utilize the whole building. So you'd have a lot of unused space in there that you'd be paying, you know, operating expenses on and so forth. Then if you look at the balance of your functions, this building, for example, all the county government functions, if, let's say you, you know, one of the things we talked about in a brief master plan update was consolidating all remaining functions into newer space. If you take all the functions, the building's not big enough. So it's not, it's not the right size, it doesn't fit out well, very expensive to renovate, and it needs a lot of work. So I think those are probably the three main factors that led us to the conclusion that it's just not going to be a good long-term asset for the county. And, you know, I could do, I could give that same discussion to executive. I could elaborate a little bit more if you'd like me to, but just in, you know, brief terms, those were kind of the main issues.
That will be fine. That is excellent.
There is a summary with the master plan from when we looked at that building, if we can make sure that all of our, especially our newer members have a copy of that to look through beforehand, so they're up to speed on what's going on.
Yeah, one other thing there.
I believe that's with our staff already.
We had, in thinking about the balance of your, you know, built assets here and your needs, we had proposed a couple different options for how to utilize that site. You know, and again, this is, this is a plan, this is, you know, nothing's cast in stone, per se, but that would be, the building itself does not have viability on the site, but the site itself is a, you know, nice piece of real estate. So if down the road, however long, 10, 15, 20 years, whatever the right timeframe is, it could be, we showed a couple options for how it could be a really good site for a consolidated space for the rest of your county government and remaining judicial functions. We did also talk about potentials of synergies with the city. I mean, there's a lot of different opportunities there. I think some of that stuff will start to play out over time.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would say is, you know, looking back at, you know, old master plans, you know, we always showed that area as the county campus, even though we showed one down here, too. But I mean, we showed more than one. But as time has gone on, we would consolidate basically all county function, or I'm going to say county campus, right there. We would have all except the one corner, the one property, which we talked about years ago, that was important to create that campus. I mean, is another reason, I think, to redevelop that and certainly hold on to that piece of property. I think it's extremely vital, that piece is a, is the piece that kind of completes that campus, I guess, what I'm saying. And you know, Jason, I think if you came and just saw what you said, just get that short presentation, Denise, a lot of people just ask questions from that point on. I mean, I think you give the basic reasons, and if people have questions, you know, they can ask.
Nick?
Just for some historical preference and add on to what Mr. Musta said. One, along with the old courthouse property, with the deals that we've made in recent years with the city of Joliet, the entire parking lot to the east of the courthouse is now in our possession. So I would argue both of those properties are probably the most valuable in downtown Joliet because you're on the main two streets through downtown Joliet and adjacent to the train station, which is going to see continued improvements in the years ahead. So you have the opportunity for transit-orientated design, which has been talked about in the past of even public-private partnerships where you'd have possible retail or private businesses on the lower levels, office space, and even residential at some point. I mean, that's a little more visionary and looking out to the future. But we did have a lot of discussion in the past when we did the initial master plan study, and that was quite a few years ago now. I know there's been an update. But there was discussion back then of both about consolidation of all county services on one campus down there. But there was also a counterargument, and we did some work on that in the master plan of having the nonjudicial functions up here. And there were some initial designs that White did on this campus to consolidate all the nonjudicial, because, I mean, that may be worth a discussion at some point in the not-too-distant future of the value of putting all of our functions in that location near the courthouse, because there are limits on mobility with the train tracks and the river and what, and parking, for that matter, whereas spreading them out, sometimes there's a value to, and that was the discussion. But I don't know that we ever came to a final conclusion on that. We just kind of left it as there's a number of concepts out there, both all centralized by the current courthouse and judicial facilities, or two separate functions. So we might want to revisit that just because we've had plenty of new board members since those discussions happened, but.
It depends on what, judicial campus and.
Civil, kind of a civil side. And that could bring in some of the other facilities that we've, over the years, consolidated to some fashion, but still are not fully consolidated, like land use, like recorder of deeds, and the coroner's office, and, I mean, potentially even schools, but right now, schools is off-site and at work. But we could maybe revisit all that as part of that discussion if there was an interest by the board, so.
Okay.
Nice segue. So we'll conclude this discussion on Capitol projects. The next item is other new business. We have none. Any public comments? Any comments from the public? Gone once, twice, gone. Chairman reports. I don't have any, Herb, do you have anything?
No, you got to gavel.
All right. There's no need for executive session.
Let's go to Capitol.
Entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Nobody wants to.
Second, my Herb. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion within the term.
We're going to start talking in about five minutes, about five minutes.
Stick that cap.
Yeah.
We could have said that for you then, huh?
I totally like this. Wrap this one.
Roll call, roll call, roll call.
Moran.
President.
Ferry.
Here.
Fritz.
Cook.
Here.
Markham.
Here.
Toomello. Fandine.
Here.
Ventura.
President.
Brooks. You have, you have a quorum. We also have Ms. Winfrey and Mr. Frizzell.
All right. Ray, would you lead as the president allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And there's another seat up here, too. Yeah, come on, Ray.
Don's your vice, so he.
Yeah, yeah.
Come up here. I'll go down.
All right, there's a vacancy up here. There's an opening. Oh, there we go, come on. Okay. Approval minutes from Will County Capitol Improvement Committee, regular meeting on March the 5th.
Move.
Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it.
At least we put on the lights up here.
Yeah. Oh, okay, we did that for a reason.
It's just all the bright people.
Capitol Improvement Executive Session Minutes from March the 5th.
Motion.
Move, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. All right. Old business.
Sure, now you put on the lights.
Okay. Yeah. You got to ask nicely. There we go.
Now you can't see.
Now we can't see the screen. You can see this one.
Was this one, or I didn't know?
I tried, I tried.
All right, let's keep it moving. Enough about the light. Old business. Update from the courthouse delivery team, White, Gilbain, and Farnsworth. David, is that you?
Good morning again. For those that weren't here previously, I'm David Lesniak. I'm the project director for the Will County Courthouse. Give you an update on where we stand at the beginning of April here. Safety-wise, we've hit 410 days without a lost time or recordable incident. We've had 256,000 safe man-hours worked on the site to date, and we've run through, run 911 people through our orientation system on the project. Our schedule-wise, substantial completion stays the same as 9:15, 2020. Project update, excavation, we're pretty much substantially complete with excavating. We do just have the detention system that we have to put in, which we're anticipating at the end of this month. Concrete also is another trade that's substantially complete. They have the main lobby, the celliport slabs to do, and some of the ramps inside the building. Concrete, steel is also another trade that's substantially complete and not really on-site anymore. Glazing-wise, we're working on the ninth and 10th floor of the tower, and we are also working on the second floor of the agency wing. Our exterior carpenter is finishing off the 10th floor and the lobby roofing, and he is just about substantially complete with his work. He does have one major elevation to finalize, and that's by the west stair. Our mason, he is also substantially complete. He's working on the remaining items and will not be back probably after this month until we start doing the celliport and dock area. Interior carpenter is framing up on the sixth floor. Right now, we've framed two, three, four, and five. Roofing on the lobby is substantially complete. We're detailing it right now. The detention system is nearly completed in the basement, and we're working on the fifth floor of the holding cells as we speak. Fireproofing contractor is also substantially complete. He has some spray insulation to do and intumescent paint on the stairs. Mechanical work, we have two contractors, multiple subcontractors, working on it. They are right now on the sixth floor of the tower doing the roughing, and we are also probably about 40% complete up in the mechanical penthouse area. We are looking to turn on the system at the beginning of May to start running air through the building. Electrical-wise, we are working again. We have two contractors, one doing the interior build-out, one doing the main risers. They are also working on the fifth floor. The second, third, and fourth are mainly done. We're pulling wire on most of those and our electrical risers. We have pulled major cabling all the way up to the penthouse for our equipment, and we're looking for ComEd to turn on our permanent power sometime at the beginning of April here. Plumbing-wise, we're working on our rough all the way up to the ninth floor and started the 10th floor. And as far as the water piping and all that, they're, they're through four and five. Fire protection, they're also on floors four, five, and six, putting in their rough miscellaneous metals. They're finishing off the courtroom. They're off-site right now. Painters have temporarily started just to do some areas that we wanted to get done for our electrical and penthouse excavation. They're not going to be on-site until the end of the month. So looking ahead in April, site contractor will start doing the detention system for the lobby slab. Glazing, we should have majority of the agency wing done as far as the exterior. The tower should be substantially complete in terms of the exterior. Masonry, he'll be off-site. Interior carpenters should be up framing seven and eight. Roofing, again, that will be substantially complete, though we will have an area up on our main penthouse that will need to be done, and we need to wait for the stairs to be completed before we can do that. Detention holding areas will be basically working on five, six, and seven. Fireproofing, he again will probably be in the lobby fireproofing the lobby steel. Mechanical, again, the main focus is to get the units running. Electrical, the main focus is to get power up to those units so we can run and start moving air, because in May, what we will be looking to do is start our courtroom mill work. Plumbing-wise, he'll be pretty much completed all the way up to the eighth floor in terms of his water and, and stack, his waste stacks and fire protection. He'll be working on floors six and seven, just staying ahead of everybody. So as far as project budget goes, it, project budget has remained unchanged. Architectural-wise and commissioning-wise, White still is working on shop drawings that are in the review. Farnsworth and Gilbain have started the commissioning with trades, and they do come out now once a week to walk the site with our mechanical, electrical, plumbing superintendent. They are also doing testing, continue to do testing on the AVB, and they started to do their testing on some of the windows. We did have an issue with some of the workmanship. We've corrected that. Now we're pursuing and going down the building to start doing caulking, hopefully by the end of the month. So the pictures that you see, especially on the last page, kind of show what the building kind of looks like with the main facade done. And if you go out there right now, you'll see about half of the second floor done on the agency.
David, and David, last night, I attended Joliet City Council meeting, and Mayor Bob Oderkirk gave an update on his tour that he went with us, and told them last night, he appreciated what you guys had did, taking us on a tour, and boy, what a long way we came. It was good to be at the top of that building and hear Don Moran tell us all the landmarks all around city of Joliet, what they were, but you all came a very long way, and the hours that you, with no injuries and on budget. It looks good over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
I'm not the speaker, but.
Mr. Chairman.
I quit speaking, though, for you.
It was, it was kind of fun, Raz, and the mayor of Joliet, asking where the city of Joliet's building was at, because you can't see it.
Yeah.
We don't need to put that in the minutes.
Celliport is where they bring the prisoners in.
Okay.
So, and, or detainees, and bring them in, and then that's where they leave from.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question for David? Joe?
Yeah, hi, I just have a comment. I had the opportunity to walk through the courthouse as well, and it's a beautiful view from the very top. And as a union electrician, I can really appreciate, like, good craftsmanship, and I just want to say that I've seen, I've seen plenty of it in that building, so.
The workmanship from electricals and even the mechanical plumbing, if you look at it, it's almost a shame to actually hide it.
Wow. Okay. Especially what we paid for it, yeah. It's good. Okay.
It would be cheaper.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, David. Update on animal control facility. Whose turn is that? Okay.
Hello, good morning, everybody. Shawn Thompson, project manager with Harbor Contractors Incorporated. Currently, excuse me, we have just mobilized on site a couple weeks ago. We got all of our SWIP or erosion control established and inspections passed. We did all of our surveying and staking for the layout of the building and everything for that. And then on the Route 52 sanitary work, we commenced with that. We got an earlier release on permit. So the sanitary extension sewer that's on Route 52 goes basically almost from litter way all the way to our property. That work has already commenced. We're about 60% through with the work there on 52, and then that'll make a turn and deliver sanitary sewer connection to our site. Unfortunately, though, we got started, and the rain has been on and off. The site does hold a lot of water, so that's prevented us from getting, fully going on earthwork. We did start getting mobilized and construction entrances and layouts begun on site, but we are a little bit behind schedule with the inclement weather. In the upcoming weeks, we do plan to continue on the Route 52 work and potentially even finish that. We will finish our on-site logistics setup. We will begin with earthwork as far as stripping and getting things down to our initial subgrade, and then commence with excavation of building foundations.
Okay.
Currently, as I stated, we are approximately two weeks behind schedule with the inclement weather. That puts us at a new completion date of December 4th. However, we feel with this being so early on in the project, we should be able to make that up as we go. that up as we go through.
Okay.
Excuse me. As far as outline and commissioning, the design, we did receive our final permits for both site building and fire suppressions. We don't have any other outstanding permits, so we are one-hundred percent released for that, which is good to have upfront in the beginning of the project.
Okay.
Currently, we're working on some RFIs with the architect and trade contractors, just on some additional information. We need some additional dimensioning on some column lines and things like that, and we're working together to get those answers and solutions through. The team with the architect, as well as the trade contractors and ourselves, we're working feverishly on finishing the remaining submittals that we have. We're about eighty percent through all submittals. All priority items are complete, with maybe one or two sitting out there, but nothing that's impacting schedule. Any questions?
Any other questions for Shawn? Yeah? Yeah? Oh. Groundbreaking? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Today at one o'clock, if the folks, when you get there, can you please park at the public safety complex? The site is, I don't want to car chase, you know, you have a couple vans that are going to shuttle you over to the site and, and, so, please park at the public safety complex. And then.
All right.
How many is it? Put on my boots.
The area, we did put some, the area is, I've got some.
We will be on stone, and for the most part, I would say any, any of those that are participating in the photo ops with shovels may want to wear boots if they have them.
Now you tell, yeah. Okay.
It's not, it's not bad, but it would be advised to wear boots.
Okay.
And then we'll have refreshments and food for everybody.
So what's on the menu then? No, no, I'll pass that shot. No answer to that. Okay, any other questions, Shawn? I was more than cooking. Jason Dwyer, did you have anything you want to add to?
I don't really.
Okay.
You know, for both projects, really, we're still working through support on the construction phase, so I don't really have anything further to add.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you, Shawn. Moving right along. Update from the health department team. Nicole, is that you?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Just to remind the, the group, my name is Nicole McCray. I'm the senior project manager for Leopardo Construction. We've submitted our March bill for 2019. Substantial completion has stayed the same for both the building and the complex. We've completed to date all of the stair block walls and the foundations, as well as the ComEd transformer. We're currently finishing up the elevator shaft walls, finishing all of our underground electrical and plumbing, and getting ready for the, the bigger of the two milestones, which is pouring the concrete slab on grade so steel can begin April 22nd. That's what I have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Did such a good job, Nicole. Thank you. All right. Okay, got all our updates? Daytack, am I missing anything? Anybody? Joe, is that everybody? All right, okay. All right, let's get ready to pay some bills. Are you ready? Authorizing Will County Executive to amend contract with HR Green Incorporated for the design engineer services required for reconfigured service parking lot located south of New Courthouse between Joliet Ottawa Streets in Joliet, Illinois.
So moved.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Number two, approve the use of construction contingency funds for labor costs to install added mealwork wall panels at the courthouse vestibules.
Move.
And move by Ferry, who's that second? Oh, over there, Tyler? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no, ayes have it. Okay, we're at number thirty?
Yes.
I can't take my eyes off that. Approve use of construction contingency for added painted metal trim at the judge entrance to the courtrooms.
Move.
Thank you, Big Jim.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Approve use of construction contingency funds for revision to shaft work enclosure numbered four, seven, and eight at the penthouse in accordance with RFI number 695. It's moved by Ray, second by Rachel, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Approve the use of construction contingency funds for various revisions to interior partition detailed in accordance with RFI numbers 643 and 693.
Move.
Move. Who's second?
Me.
All right, me. All in favor? Signify by aye?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Who's? I'm getting used to these new teeth in, Nicole, just wait till you get my age. Approve use of construction contingency funds for door swinging revision to secure on-floor holding area at adjacent courtroom levels three, four, and five.
Move.
It's been moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to ComEd for the Will County Courthouse. Thanks, Ray. Second by Ferry, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to Farnsworth Construction Group for the.
You missed White.
Uh-oh, which one is that?
Number eight.
Number eight. Okay. You don't need to get paid. Authorizing payment for White and Company for the Will County Courthouse. Ray, move. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have, no, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to Farnsworth Group for the Will County Courthouse. Move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to Gilbain Building Company for the Will County Courthouse.
Move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment for, to ComEd for Will County Health Department.
Move.
Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to Leopardo Company Incorporated for Will County Health Department.
Move.
Ray's excited. Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to Farnsworth Group to Will County Health Department.
So moved.
Ray is really excited today. Move, second, all in favor? Aye.
I'm just hungry, I'm hoping those feet don't fly out of there.
Okay. You owe me much, dude. Thank you. Ayes have it. Authorizing payment to Clubber Architects and Engineer for Will County Health Department. Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to.
Essential.
Thank you. Health secretary for Will County Health Department.
Second.
Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, ayes have it. Authorizing payment to White and Company for the Will County Animal Control Facility. Move, second, all in favor?[1723.83]